Madam Secretary, please note for the record that all council members are present tonight. And we do have a quorum. And with that, I'll start the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank all the members of the public who are here tonight. We always appreciate citizens being here and participating in our meetings. I'll begin with one announcement tonight. This marks one year, I think, one day shy of the one-year anniversary of our city manager, who's been with us, Manager Jesus Garza, was first appointed by the City Council on April 9th, 2019, and began working for the city on May 20th, which is a year ago this Wednesday. We would like to congratulate you on this milestone and thank you for your commitment to enhancing livability in Victoria, and we look forward to continuing work with you in the future. Thank you for your work.
Awesome. Thank you.
We'll go on into any employee recognitions tonight?
I have a couple of announcements myself.
Okay.
And so, I'm returning the favor. At the last council meeting, we briefly mentioned the anniversary that you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Lofgren, and Dr. Young had. But we obviously have other council members that also celebrate anniversaries in May. And today specifically is actually the five-year anniversary of Councilwoman Scott. And a few days ago was the eight-year anniversary of Councilwoman Solis. And on the 21st is the seven-year anniversary of Councilwoman Bachnight. And so also, I want to thank you for your service to our community serving on council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more announcement really quickly, Mr. Mayor. This week is EMS Week, and on behalf of the Fire Department, I want to remind the public about a blood drive that's taking place. We are encouraging citizens to celebrate EMS Week by donating blood. Your donation may save the life of a trauma victim or a medical patient experiencing a critical blood loss. Victoria Fire Department is one of the few services in the nation that transfuses lifesaving blood in the field, but can only do so through the generosity of your donations. Please make your appointment today by going to www.soutetexasblood.org. And don't forget to mention you're there for EMS Week. And so, thank you for our EMS professionals for all the work that they do as well.
Any other announcements? And we'll move on to citizens, to items from council. Do we have any items from council tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull D six.
All right, we'll pull D six. I think staff has informed me that they would like to pull item D four as well.
Yes, sir.
From the consent agenda. So there any other items from council?
I have an item, but it doesn't have to do with the agenda. I wanted to ask, Sunday, I was going down Ben Wilson, right there where you pass Lone Tree. There's a grocery store, or it used to be a store there. There's a real foul odor of sewer coming out from, from, starting from there all the way to the entrance to Mayfair. Does anybody know what it is? I mean, bad, because it used to be there when I lived around there, but now it's extended. So I don't know how the people haven't called in and complained.
We can look into it.
Please?
Absolutely.
And then another question. When are we going to start, or I didn't look at my CIP list, and I apologize, for Ben Wilson? Because Ben Wilson, right from Lone Tree all the way to Pulahoga Highway is really bad. And you have, you know, your softball park there, you have the community center, you have Strowman. So there's a lot of traffic on that street, and it's like, you know, you're going to lose something on there when you go driving that street. So if somebody could take a look at that too, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more items from council? Hearing none, I'll move into citizens' communication. Always invite any citizen to come forward to speak to us on any matter. I would ask that if you're here to speak to any of the two items with a public hearing, that you reserve your comments until that time. So anyone that wants to speak to council, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll move into items with public hearings.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Going to give us a presentation before?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. And this is the first CDBG presentation that, of several, that you'll see over the next coming months. And what I'm asking tonight for is for us to amend the current 2015 to 2019 consolidated plan. As you know, with our CDBG funds, we have to create a five-year plan. And then to expend those funds, we have an annual action plan that matches the five-year plan. So at the next meeting, we'll look into those annual action plans. How to get the right clicker? So the First Amendment that we are proposing in our five-year CPS is to eliminate our mortgage assistance program, which is a total of $20,000 that we're proposing to decrease this budget. This 20,000 comes out of several plan years. We had 5,000 allocated in the 2017 plan year, 5,000 in the 2018 plan year, and then 10,000 in the 2019 plan year. And unfortunately, we have been having a really hard time finding applicants that are qualified for the funding. It looks like banks provide a better product than, or better assistance through HOPA funds and other types of grants and assistance than our mortgage assistance program. As you know, the program is written for down payment and closing cost assistance. And so you have to have a high enough credit score to qualify for those mortgages and receive those funds by meeting the CDBG eligible criteria of being low to moderate income. But you have to, you know, you're low to moderate income folks sometimes have a hard time qualifying. So we are, we struggle to find qualified applicants. So we are recommending that we close out that program in this five-year plan and then move those funds to demolition. And this is our regular entitlement funding. The next amendments are all related to our CARES Act funding, which is our COVID-19 money. And so we are amending the plan to add in the allotment that we received, which is $355,000 and $657. And then we are programming some of that money into the different public service programs and public facility projects. So you'll see the proposed budget increase of youth service programs for $20,000. Utility assistance increasing to 20 by $20,000. A job training program that we're increasing by $6,000. Meals on Wheels for $15,000. And then we are adding public facility projects for youth centers and the food bank facilities. So these exact programs will come back in the annual action plan at the next meeting and with more definitions on what those different programs entail. And after this allocation out of the COVID money, we will have approximately $99,657 remaining for the response to COVID-19. So as I mentioned, this is a substantial plan amendment that we're asking for tonight. And at the next meeting, we will bring back the 2019 annual action plan amendments, which will further authorize us to enter into contracts with individual agencies for these programs for the 2019 COVID money. And then we are also going to be bringing our 2020 entitlement recommendation at the next meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you. Oh, that's right. I'll now open a public hearing on this matter for anyone who wishes to step forward and speak to it. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
I move to adopt item C one.
Motion and a second to adopt item C one. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign.
Item C two is an emergency ordinance suspending library fines in response to COVID-19. And Mayor and Council, I want to point out that I placed an updated version of this ordinance at the dais for your consideration, that update involves the, I think it's the fourth or fifth recital paragraph. When we drafted this ordinance, the mayor was considering lifting his declaration of disaster effective midnight tonight, and he and the judge ultimately decided to accelerate that process. And so I've changed the dates in here to reflect what happened, and that's the only update to this. But when, if we get to the point of a motion being made, if a council member would simply move to adopt the revised version, we can avoid going through the amendment process.
All right. I would now open a public hearing on this matter. Anybody wishing to speak to this, please step forward. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing.
Mayor, if, I was just going to add really briefly that you may recall from the presentation that Dana gave a couple of meetings ago, that the library is going through a major renovation project that keeps it closed. And so the intent in extending this is not 100% solely based on COVID-related matters, but we felt it was prudent to extend it to the point where the library is going to fully reopen. And then at that point, facilitate individuals being able to go in, take their stuff, and handle their business. So I just want to throw that in there.
I move that we adopt the emergency ordinance, ordinance suspending the library fines in response to, as presented on this corrected one, okay?
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve any discussion.
I had a question. Where, if someone wanted to return a book, where would they go right now?
So it's a combination. Individuals can drop it off in person inside the building. There's of course a drive-by type of setup where they can pull up on the side of the building on the road and drop it off there as well. We have a lot of individuals, though, that are on an ongoing sort of basis where they drop off and pick up. And so for a lot of individuals, it's not simply about dropping off. It's about dropping off and continuing to get a service from the library. And so while yes, and I'm sure you're headed to where that people can just drop off, even if the building's closed, and while yes, that is accurate, for a lot of individuals, it's not just about that, it's other services that they get at the same time. And so part of our idea is to simply facilitate this for those individuals.
Okay. And if I'm reading this correctly, no, never mind, that's fine. I was reading it incorrectly.
Any further discussion?
So just to be clear on the point, if you have an overdue book right now, you can go turn it in.
You could, yes, sir.
Okay.
And then there wouldn't be a fine.
Correct.
So anybody that has an overdue book, please bring them back.
Well, from the time I vacated that order, technically, there could be, correct?
That's correct. As of right now, before this gets passed, fines could be imposed and would be imposed under our code as of midnight Thursday, when the executive orders were lifted.
Well, is the intention that fines not be levied during that time?
Yes, ma'am.
So should this be changed to make that clear?
So that it is retroactive.
That's what the date is?
The, well, no, ma'am.
That's what you've changed it to last Thursday, so that that won't happen?
Correct. The wording below the line simply says that any fines that are incurred during the time the library was closed. And so that is retroactive and covers this gap.
So if anybody has a library book that's past due or that they're through with, please return it.
Yes, ma'am.
For further clarification, I don't believe that it forgave any fines imposed before my order, correct?
Correct.
So it was only during that period. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Mayor, there are four items remaining on the consent agenda tonight. That'll be a pretty large single vote. They are item D one, which is adopting the minutes of the regular council meeting held on May 5th. D two, which is designating the authorized signatories for the Hurricane Harvey Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program, contract 20-066-007-C041. Item D three, which is adopting the civil rights policies, procedures, and plans as required for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program grant awards. And item D five, which is to accept the Homeland Security Grant Program funding through the Texas Office of the Governor in the amount of $32,500 to fund the purchase of a rapid special response vehicle through terrorist, for terrorist high-risk incidents.
Move to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
Second. Motion and second to adopt the items left on the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign.
Item D four is a professional services agreement with Luck Design Team LLC in the amount of $89,925 for redesign of the duck pond in Riverside Park.
I understand we have a presentation on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Hello and good evening, Mayor and members of council. And I wanted to provide a quick update as to where we are today with the duck pond. And this is the next step for the duck pond process. And I did bring a guest with me. I did bring Brent Luck. He is the owner of Luck Design Team. He's right behind me. He's here to help answer any questions as we go along through the presentation. All right, so just a quick review. Back on March 3rd, 2020, I presented two options. In consensus was from council that option two, which is the picture off to the right. The next steps are to hire an engineer architect firm such as Luck Design. And those plans are in preparation for construction and applying for grant opportunities. I also wanted to follow up on some of the questions in the discussion we had from the last meeting. So a quick Q and A I have here is, will the water level be the same as before? Going back to this first picture, the picture on the right is potentially what the water level will look like on the side where the sidewalk is going to be. You'll see about two to three levels of the brick exposed. It won't be quite as level as it was before when you walked on the sidewalk along the bank of the duck pond. Does the sidewalk material have to be concrete was another question. It does not have to be concrete, but Brent had suggested that that is the best material to use. Floods have rippled asphalt. As we all know from Hurricane Harvey, the flood rippled the asphalt road through Riverside Park. And as well as in Grover's Bend, we always have to replace the granite gravel trail that goes through Grover's Bend. Can the floating fishing pier be moved to a different location? Of course, that is an option that we can move it so that it doesn't impose any ceremony photographs that are going on at the gazebo. Can we still accommodate paddle boats? Yes, we can still do that. There could be potential for a separate dock added to the project if that is the case, and we cannot use the same dock from the fishing pier. There might have to be a second dock added to the duck pond to accommodate future paddle boats. And why are there four skimmers for both options? Again, this is just to assist the leave debris from the cypress trees and other foliage that falls. And it's to help catch it so that our maintenance staff can go through and collect it in a better, more efficient way, instead of letting it fall to the bottom, just like you would in a pool. Some of the services provided by Brent and his team are these here. And I have him to answer and kind of take the lead on this for the scope. And then at the bottom, you can see the cost as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Again, Brent Luck with Luck Design Team. Just to step through the scope, my company is also teamed with M and S Engineering and a locally-based TSI for the geotechnical evaluation of the project. But I just wanted to step through, as you see on the bullets on the slide, we're going to do a survey of basically the whole duck pond area, including both ponds and their perimeter from the roadway almost to the edge of the golf course. It's almost seven acres. And so we really want to get that whole picture, as well as, one of the items that we're looking at adding is an aeration system, of which I understand the full components of what that aeration system would be affecting. You see the second item there with the geotechnical evaluation. With the failure of the existing wall that's gone along the perimeter of the pond, we're actually going to do four different geotech borings along the pond's perimeter to make sure that our structural knows exactly what that wall system needs to be. One of the other items, it's not necessarily problematic, but it needs to be evaluated, are all the cypress trees that are along, particularly the pond where the gazebo is. All those cypress knees start to bubble up to the top. If you walk by there, you can see them coming. So to understand what kind of movement or as root systems die out and leave porous natures, porous gaps, we need to make sure that we understand from a structural standpoint that the integrity of that wall is not damaged or developed. So the schematic design and construction documents preparations are essentially just the process that we'll go through. We'll provide drawings at a 30%, 60%, and then again, 100% are issued to bid level for city staff review before we were to issue anything to bid. The bidding and construction phase services are also part of our overall scope of services. One of the things that we're also going to assist, we've had lots of background working with Texas Parks and Wildlife. I know that's part of the city's intent to look for and explore grant funding through Texas Parks and Wildlife associated with that. Our timeline, basically, I think you're going to share the timeline in just a second. We'll back into that August 1st, October 1st deadline, excuse me, in order to be Texas Parks, to meet their grant application deadline, so.
All right, moving next to the next slide.
Can I ask you a question before we move forward?
Sure.
On the bidding service, are we in a position yet, Mr. Gush, to use one of the alternate methods, like competitive seal proposal?
I believe that's a question for the purchasing department.
Do you want to handle that?
Oh, me? Okay.
Simple answer.
Yes.
I'm trying to give the manx some credit, that's all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here tonight.
You know, he dressed up.
It's really a good way to go, because it gives you more flexibility in the process. So I'm glad to hear that, thank you.
Great, so here's the overall project timeline. In June 2020, this year, Brent will start the survey process of the property. Then in July, they're going to work on the schematic development preparation. Then we move on to August and September, we have the construction document preparation. October, we're like, that is the deadline, the tentative deadline as of right now with Texas Parks and Wildlife to apply for their urban land development grant. It's a 50/50 matching grant. And right now, that deadline is for October. And February of next year, hopefully, we are awarded those grant funds. And then that would push us into March to doing the bid, issuing a bid to a construction company. April, we would begin construction. And then in November, we'd be looking at, hopefully, completing the project of next year. Any questions?
Where are the ducks in the picture?
Yeah, that's a good question. That's actually not our duck pond, but hopefully it'll be one day.
We moved the ducks.
In the paper, unfortunately, we had lost a few, so.
Has Mr. Leesack submitted his FAD design yet?
Um, he does not. Says it's in the works.
I'll help with the construction.
Great. Anything else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. We here entertain a motion?
I move to adopt.
Second.
D four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt item D four. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Item D six is to grant variances to section 10-115 and 13-27 for a septic system installation at 3402 Robles Street.
I asked for this item to be pulled so that we can discuss it for a moment. I would like to, I don't know whether it's condition or amend the variance, to make it clear that it's limited to one septic system. it's limited to one septic system for this tract. There's vacancy around it. It could be combined. So, I don't want to just give a variance septic system, but I guess one operational, because I think there is one now that they're abandoning. So, one operational septic system. And that would be, I guess I would make that in the form of a motion. Or, do we have to move to adopt first and then amend it?
Move to adopt first and then make a motion to amend.
Okay, so I make the motion to adopt D six.
Second.
We have a motion is second to adopt item D six. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to amend the, amend the motion that it be restricted to one operational septic system.
Do you have a map?
Second.
Yeah, it's on there.
The map, the map's included in a packet, but I'll kind of briefly explain what's the situation out there. The service is about seven hundred and fifty feet. The location of the house and residence is seven hundred and fifty feet from our current main, and the owner is removing his existing septic system, which is an old septic system with a leach field, and he wants to install a new one, which requires, because it's within our ETJ, requires him to get approval from the county. County in turn asks us if we're okay with that, and he's putting in a brand-new septic aerobic system. It'll have the alarms fully approved and inspected by the county. But it's on the verge of us not being able, him not being able to put a seven hundred and fifty-foot service and meet that elevation. He's very, they're very close in elevation difference. So, that's why we recommended a septic system approval for his request.
Otherwise, it'd require a lift station.
It'd require him to have a private grinder station and a seven hundred and fifty-foot-long force main. And this is an improvement, because he is upgrading to the new septic design systems, which that'll be a big improvement for that area.
And I'm not necessarily saying that we wouldn't grant another variance, but I just want to have an opportunity. I want to have a chance to look at it. So, that's the source of why I'm suggesting the amendment that's been seconded.
Ken, how big is that lot?
It's, it's, it's a standard lot. I'd give it.
So, it's around six thousand square feet?
Yes.
I don't see why we need to amend it. I mean, you're not going to put another septic tank on a.
I thought the write-up said it was one point seven six acres.
Yes. He's got one. He could theoretically, it's one, and he's on city water, which gives him a little bit more latitude as far as a septic allowable. He could possibly do another one, but again, that would have to go through the county regulations, county approval process, and it would come back to us again.
It's not six thousand. It's, it's one and three-quarter acres. That's a lot more than six thousand square feet.
Okay, but the house, if it's that silver or that gray area in there, I don't see why he would want to put another septic tank. I'm just looking at the property. It just doesn't seem.
I don't know if all that's his. I don't know if all that might be his, though.
Right.
Because it's a private road. It'd be more than one point seven six acres. You have to have at least a minimum of an acre, if I'm not mistaken, to do a septic system.
Correct.
But it might just be parceled out for that one little section. I'm fine with your.
And if the county's going to have to approve it.
Right.
He gets to do what he can.
It lets him do what he wants to do, but it keeps us from giving away something that we don't have to.
But I don't see why you restrict it if the county has precedence over us. He has to go to the county first. That's what he just said.
The way I understand it, this is just to clarify that we are approving a variance for one septic system for this lot.
Correct. And it's because he's within our ETJ. That's why the county brings it back to us for our approval on these certain circumstances. And it's very, it would put an undue burden to that property owner to run that line with a grinder station to ours, to our service line.
And in Ms. Turner's letter, it does not mention anything about taking out the second septic system. It just says the current home is currently on a septic system on this property and just moved into a larger home that needs a larger, more reliable septic system.
Right.
So, the old home, if they wanted to, could still use that, but not with Ms. Scott's amendment. They would have to tie into the new system.
They would have to tie into that new system.
Right.
Those septic systems are expensive.
Yes, they are.
Very expensive.
Yes, they are.
So, I don't know how, you know, he could, if that old one is already dilapidated, I don't think he'd use it. That's why he's asking for a variance, and if he got that kind of money to put in another one, that's fine, but it doesn't seem possible. But it's up to you. If he want to make that amendment, it's.
Well, I mean, I'm supporting him getting the variance, just making that condition, that it be just for that, that one system.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
Being that's in the county, do we have that right to make that amendment?
In the ETJ.
In the ETJ.
Any further discussion? Now, I'll call for a vote on the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Two, two opposite, five, two. Okay, now we'll move on to the main amended motion. Any further discussion on it? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Mister, item E one, which is to apply for grant funding in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars from the Office of the Governor's Criminal Justice Division Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding through the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. Tonight, I wanted to talk to you about two funding opportunities that are available to first responders, both of which are part of the eight hundred and fifty million dollar government coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program for first responders dealing with the COVID pandemic. The first one that I want to talk to you about is through our local COG, which is the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission. The funding will cover costs of supplies, overtime for first responders, which would include police and fire personnel, and it also will help with equipment. Both of these funding sources, we only have to apply. They've already pretty much been allocated towards us, and the COG has been given three hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty, of which Victoria has allocated a hundred thousand. We plan to use, in the slide there, you notice that it's cover supplies and overtime, but also a technology upgrade. When we did the mobile collection site out at the community center, our command post lacked sufficient equipment, and this technology upgrade that we're proposing or that we want to use, it'll take care of that in the event that we have to use it again. And I'll answer any questions you might have.
I move to adopt item E one.
Second. A motion is second to adopt item E one. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign.
Item E two is to apply for grant funding in the amount of sixty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding.
Again, this is the second source that's available to us. Same thing applies. It's for overtime and costs related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. This is through, we are a direct allocated city. We're listed, we're on the list for that, and it's a predetermined amount of sixty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight.
Move to adopt item E two.
Second.
A motion is second to adopt item E two. Any discussion on that matter?
I have one question. Is this part of the money that, you know, when we were in the EMO, that we were calculating how much we needed to submit so that we can get reimbursed for overtime and things like that? No?
No, it's separate. That was specifically being tracked for FEMA reimbursement purposes.
Okay.
We'll actually talk about that at our next council meeting.
I just wanted to make clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion from any? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign.
Item E three is a contract award for the Azalea Street Sidewalk Project to J and R Contracting Services Incorporated of Victoria, Texas, in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand six hundred and ninety dollars.
Good evening, Mayor, council. We are here just to discuss the bidding process for this, and then I'll turn it over to Ken to discuss the project. We had submitted a, or posted a invitation for competitive bidding for this under twenty-two sixty-nine, and we received three bids back, and J and R Contracting Service was the lowest competitive bidder. So, I will turn this over to Ken Gill and be available for any questions.
Evening, council again. This is for the actual construction. It's part, it's all wrapped into the Stoll Street project, and this is the CDBG portion, which is the sidewalk on Azalea Street and up to San Antonio Street. And that's the actual project location. It's, it's on the, I call it the west side of Azalea Street and then the north side of San Antonio Street. Project consists of, we got to pipe that ditch so that we have the room and that sufficiency to put the sidewalk in, and then we'll, on Azalea Street, and then we'll continue in closing the ditch on the San Antonio side. It's a four-foot sidewalk, about seven hundred feet total, and as the mayor would ask, yes, it will meet ADA compliance rules and standards. There's the actual bid sheet, if there's any questions on that. And I will go into the project update for Stoll Street, since they're all wrapped together. Of course, this is the Azalea. We're opening bids on May sixth. This is the award of the contract, and the construction is anticipated start in July with completion at the end of the year. We are currently in the process of working with HEB, getting an appraisal with, for the HEB, for the acquisition of Stoll Street, the extension, and Mike has already secured a contract with the appraisal company, and we expect to hear back from them with the cost of the purchase of the property by the end of the month. Then, then we'll begin negotiations with HEB, and we hope to come, and prior to that, we will, once we get the negotiations complete with HEB, we have a firm figure, we would bring that back to council prior to us engaging any, any further acquisition to get your, that was one of the questions you had asked, is bring it back once we know the cost. And that's that step. Tech dot, go briefly. Tech dot's working on the plans for the signalization that is going to happen, looking at letting the project in next year in March, and then complete November, December. We have a preliminary design of that current layout of Stoll Street, which is right there, and it does show an access going into HEB. And that's, that was always part of the original plan, and we will work with HEB to, you know, determine that exact alignment, widths, radiuses, and such forth. The other interesting part of this project that I want to pass on is Tech dot does plan on putting a median on Business Fifty-Nine from Navarro to Sam Houston, and that's scheduled for next year and twenty-one. So, that's all going to, this whole project ties together as far as a signalization and a median and removal of HEBs, that current driveway that they have. And I'll entertain any questions or pass it over to Jesus or Mike if they have any additional comments.
So, by the end of June or first of July, sometime July, we'll know what that final number is.
Yes, we should.
Before we move forward. Okay. Any further discussion? Or report? Thank you.
Thank you. There needs to be action on.
I move we adopt E five.
Second.
Motion for item E, D three, E three?
E three.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me.
I don't have my computer glasses tonight, so. Any second to that motion?
I do.
All right, we have a motion is second for item E three. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. We'll move on to city manager reports.
Yes, sir. Over the last several months, there have been several departments that have provided annual report presentations to you. One of the things that we're trying to expand on is the number of departments or divisions that provide these types of annual updates to you. The spring is the perfect time for it, because I think it sets us up well for the budget conversations that we have during the summer, so that going into those budget conversations, everybody is as educated as possible on just what some of these departments are up to, in terms of their accomplishments, but also in terms of some of their goals. You know, oftentimes, it's hard to get into some of these things as part of the budget workshop. So, I'm not sure to what extent in the past, you had received some type of annual update from the communications department, but I want to make sure that's something that we start doing. And so, Ashley will provide an update there. Following her will be Darryl, who will provide an update on our newest division, community appearance, and obviously, we'll be here able to answer any questions you might have on either of those operations. So, without further ado, Ash?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Garza. As you know, I'm seated. I'm seated. I am expecting, and so I hope you bear with me. Luxury is not really standing for long periods of time, so.
But we have a great, but we have a great camera system, so it's picking you up anyway.
That's true. I am shown, so thank you, Shane. So, as Mr. Garza said, I'll be providing really a lot of information that I'm going to try and keep into a really brief summary for you guys. We've done a lot this year, and so if I can find my mouse, I can show an overview. Okay, so it started when I arrived here in September twenty nineteen, and you'll see, the first thing I want to talk to you all about is our vision. The vision for the department, of course, the organization, and that does stem down from, of course, city manager's office. In order to meet your vision, you have to have a strategy in place. And so I developed that, and then a lot of what came out of that is a result of department changes, updates, new deliverables, which I'll show you all examples of in just a second. And then, of course, establishing measurements, dashboards, analytics, in order to measure the success of all the changes that we've put into place. I want to talk to you about a huge undertaking in community engagement of the twenty-twenty census this year, which happens every ten years, go over some COVID nineteen updates and where we're headed in the future. And so, to start, I want to talk about the vision, and so, communications always is evolving. Not only the way that we communicate to each other, but the technologies that we use as well. You'll see in this little circle graphic here that one of the main things we want to do, and these are just a picture-perfect way of implementing some of the changes that we have thus far and that we want to, and so it's not all-encompassing, is storytelling. And we want to be able to proactively plan for that story, but also produce measures in place that are telling that story. And so, why not, who else would be better to tell it than us, right? And so, you'll see some of the platforms that we've implemented in order to do so. In addition to that is content marketing, things such as social media posts, news releases. We want to remain consistent so that we're providing everyone with information, and they come to us as a consistent source of information versus hearing it, again, from someone else. We wanted to up the level of internal and external support we provide to the city of Victoria. So, that's not only to our city, our departments, to you all, but also to the public. And then, of course, incorporate some of those modern technologies that are out there that maybe we hadn't looked at, and then, of course, be accessible to all. And I'll go into a couple more specific examples of what that means in just a second. So, how do we get the vision into place? The strategy that we've incorporated is considered an integrated marketing communication strategy. And so, what that means is, we have a lot of different existing platforms that we had in place, but we wanted to add to that and also integrate them across each other. So, I could go into detail on the next slide, I'm sure. So, we want everyone to work as a unified system, not disparate ones, which means separate from each other. So, this is the perfect graphic that Mr. Shane, our graphic designer, multimedia specialist, put together. You'll see all the circles represent the various platforms that we either had in place or that we recently added this year. And for example, like I said, we don't want them to not talk to each other, right? We want to repurpose that. We want to repurpose that content so that they're being used on multiple platforms and not just one separate from the other. The government cable channel, typically we would produce long-form videos, documentaries, things like that. Could be maybe 60 minutes, and that's a lot of good content. And I thought, how many people are actually watching the PEG channel? Versus how many people are on, say, podcasts or social media or YouTube or the website? Why not pull that content, reformat it, repurpose it, and put it on those various platforms as well so that those audiences are being reached as well? And so that's what this image represents. Not only the increased level of platforms that were accessed on, but also the repurpose of the content that we already have and are already providing. And so I, I don't want to go through each step, but I'll just quickly say that each of these platforms demands establishing some goals. How do we know we're successful with them if we're not measuring the, the goals and the analytics that we have in place? Second, we need to make sure that we have the right channel managers. And so I'll go into that in the next slide because it, it kind of segues into why we made some of the department changes that we did. And then the last thing, like I said, is to measure each platform. So back in September 2019, we had a multimedia manager, nothing has changed there. This person typically essentially manages the PEG channel and any video product that we put out. We also had reporting to that person, a videographer. We upped the, or altered the job description to consider a multimedia specialist as well because we wanted to include graphic design and a little bit more features beyond just videography, such as podcasts, audio. Like I said, graphic design and a couple other aspects as well. And so speaking of graphic design, you'll notice one of the transitions that took place was the print shop operations, which included coordination, scheduling, setting up the printer. Some of those mundane tasks are now under finance. However, the graphic design has remained under communications. And so that's what that position does. Although it's not full-time, when, you know, internally a department needs that request, I mean, we can meet that. The full-time print shop supervisor was a major change. Like I said, it was moved under finance. And so that position changed to a full-time communications specialist. And that gives us the ability to produce a lot more of those deliverables that I mentioned in that integrated communication strategy graphic in the previous slide. And then lastly, our part-time assistant, who just did some, you know, again, mundane tasks for the department, was changed to a full-time digital media specialist. And so we're not forgetting the traditional means of communications, but there is a shift that's going towards focusing on more technologically advanced methods of communication. And in order to do that and to be successful and to carry out some of those goals in the strategy is to have someone in place who can really manage and make sure that we're really putting our all into those channels. Let me go to, okay, so updates. This again is not an all encompassing list, but I thought it would be a nice picture to show you all what we've been working on. We now, I'm not sure if you're aware, are able to live stream to Facebook, including this meeting tonight. And so again, we're able to reach more audiences than before. And so that's the goal, right? We want to remain accessible and transparent. We've also increased some social media platforms. We're now also on LinkedIn and Instagram. And we've increased the amount of content. Social media might have been an afterthought in some cases. Now it's definitely a priority because most people nowadays are on their phones and we want to meet them where they're at. In order to help with that, like I said, we have the digital media specialist, but we also have a Sprout Social, social media management tool in place. And what that is, is it's a paid software program that helps us schedule posts in advance so that someone who's, say, working on a press release doesn't have to stop right then and there and create a post. You can schedule it months, weeks in advance. And so it's extremely helpful. It provides analytics, it tells us, you know, what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong, extremely helpful. The social media policy was also revised to help empower our departments to better understand the uses of social media, but also not be afraid to post. We're also in the middle of a website redesign. We're actually launching it next week. And I'll go into more details of that, on that in just a second. Like I said, we have a new multimedia specialist here, Shane, and he was able to update our graphic standards. And that's again for, for branding and marketing purposes. A couple other things we did, we established a weekly e-newsletter called the City View. And that previously was limited to a PDF format and email, but there was no way to track the results of that. No open click rates, no views.
And internal.
And internal, correct. So that goes internally and externally. So it's really to provide you all more information in an easy central hub, which is part of the vision. And, and also to the external audiences, like I said, the public. We want them to be able to come to us to hear the information first instead of other outlets.
Prior, the PDF newsletter was only distributed internally. Part of the upgrade was also ensuring that that information was being shared out to the public or anybody who signs up.
Yes, sir. So now anyone in the public can subscribe essentially to the e-newsletter. It's a great way, again, to tell our story and to tell all the breaking news. And I'll go into an example in just a second. Another weekly report that we set up is completely new to the organization, and it's called our Media Mentions Report. And so both of these are using an email marketing system that sets up the right material in a graphically designed, or graphically appealing design. It's email marketing, and again, we can track the analytics of it. Media mentions specifically I'll go into in just a bit as well. Again, we increased written publications, we increased news releases on a consistent basis, established a City Watch blog, and changed the column format, which is what we submit to the advocate, from one perspective to now all department head perspectives, so that we're covering everything within the organization. We've set up the ability to do portable live streams, which, for example, we did the UHV Ben Wilson Corridor Improvement Public Forum. And it was really successful. We had no interruptions and it was a, we had really good feedback. We were able to even get questions online through Facebook and answer them in real time in the middle of the meeting. And that was extremely beneficial for maybe people who can't attend the meeting in person. We created more short-form video, like I mentioned earlier, to repurpose content. And we established a monthly digital analytics report where we're essentially using all these digital realms of communication and we're getting it to all the department heads as well so that they can say, okay, here's where we're at, here's where we need to be, or is it working? And that's the new positions, job role. So real quick, I'll pull up the City View. For those of you who haven't seen it, or maybe those online watching, the first part that you'll see here is the masthead, the City View. Show you the date and then a couple ways that you can continue to connect with us, which is social media. The first section is breaking news. That's really the biggest bread and butter of this newsletter. It's a way for you to get the breaking information from the City of Victoria first. And so.
Excuse me, Ashley, for, for those of us watching who are a little slower.
Sure.
How did you get to this? Because you went to the website, but this isn't the homepage.
Sure.
So what did you click on to?
James, can you bring me back to that slide? So right here is a PowerPoint slide. I took a screenshot of what the latest City View e-newsletter looks like.
So it's an email that people receive?
I think she means the public.
Is it on, is it on the website?
It's the City of Victoria.
I see what you're saying. It is sent out via email, but you can also access it online through a web browser.
Okay.
And so this is on our current website, victoriatx.org, under the archived version.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. And so I simply hyperlink so that, you know, it would be a little easier to, to get to. So these are the two latest breaking news stories. Actually, this was from May 11th. And so what we're able to do essentially is look at which are the top viewed stories, which ones are being opened, and then which ones are being clicked through. And that really helps us determine what we need to do in the future. I'll just scroll through here. Again, relevant content, these are just updates. We always include during the week of city council, the agenda that's coming up. We have a calendar section that's consistently updated. And this is the previous week's breaking news in case someone missed it. And then of course Citizens Corner and some more social media links at the bottom. Thank you. The second report that I had mentioned to you all was brand new, it's the Media Mentions. And so right here, again, this is online. It's MelChimp is the email marketing tool that we use for now, and it's available on our website. It's also emailed out only internally. So it provides you all with a snapshot of who's talking about us in the media, more so City of Victoria mentions, maybe it's a staff member. And it's extremely helpful for us to stay on top of, you know, what's being said, what's the buzz out there in the community. And this is one easy access, go-to source for that. So we usually put the top two stories up here. Again, like I said, anytime we're mentioned in the media, you can see who is mentioning us on what day. And then COVID-19 has been really important to the, to the audience, to the public, and so we included a section there. Other noteworthy news, not necessarily city-related. And then word on the streets is a play on stories that are specifically related to street closures, road repairs. Thank you. And feel free to interrupt me at any point. So short-form media is the next one I wanted to show you all. And again, we had long-form video and now we're trying to do more short-form video. And again, the reason for that is the public's response and engagement in video is now no longer than 15 seconds on average on Facebook. And so if we're going to have these videos on the PEG channel, then we need to kind of shorten them up and make them engaging and educational. And so that's what we've done here. And so I'll show you, I think it's clicked on there, the Victoria Minute and a couple, just the intro piece. Hey, guys, thank you for watching today's Victoria Minute, where we talk with City of Victoria leaders about all things and different various topics as it relates to the City of Victoria departments. Today, we have here Dana Williams-Capone, the Victoria Public Library Director. And so today, Dana, I wanted to just take a minute to talk to you about some of the services that the City of Victoria's library offers.
Certainly, Ashley, thank you for having me. The first thing that you can do when you come to Victoria Public Library is get your free library card. It is free to all residents of the state of Texas and gives you access to many types of services and programs. Starting off at the very beginning with your children's storytime. And that's an opportunity for your children to get access to early literacy skills and for you to connect with other parents.
And so that's just one example of a Victoria Minute video. And so we, we wanted to essentially is educate the public about things that they might, we might think that they already know, but maybe they don't. And so this was actually posted on social media and we boosted it with maybe $20 behind it and received about 3,000 views just with that budget. This next one is an interview format series that we've established. And again, we want to cover a lot of those topics that the community cares about. In this case, it was road repairs. Well, thank you, everyone, for watching. My name is Ashley Strevel. I am the Director of Communications and Public Affairs for the City of Victoria. And I'm here today with our guest, Ken Gill. He's our city engineer with the City of Victoria. And today, he's going to talk to us a little bit about the city's preventative maintenance program for the streets. Ken, can you tell us a little bit about your overall preventative maintenance program?
What we're trying to do on City of Victoria's Preventive Maintenance is extend the life of the streets to the 30-year design life. In the beginning, we started that by changing the actual construction of the roads, improving the base material to a limestone thickness of the limestone we improved and the surface quality of the, of the.
So we actually had really good feedback on that interview with Ken. He provided some good information. And again, we're able to put it on anything else beyond PEG channel, which is cable and those who are, who don't necessarily always watch cable TV. A couple others, digital media, so I'll just run through these real quickly. We have a story feature on Facebook that had not previously been used. We started using it and now we're reaching 2.2,000 additional viewers. And that's on average, every single story that takes literally two minutes to do. We also have a couple of posts, creative graphics that are done. Again, Shane right here did this. Our digital media specialist boosted it and we were able to reach nearly 3,500 people with just, again, a $23 budget. And this is an example of the dashboard that I mentioned to you earlier in order to manage social media. We've upped our branding efforts. So this right here is an example of our email signature that now is integrated with James's effort to go from .org to .gov. And so while they're at that, we're also updating the email signatures as well. You'll see that you don't lose your department logo essentially, but you still have the consistency of the main City of Victoria logo on the right and all of our social media graphics as well. On the right, to reach our younger audiences, we have new Snapchat filters, which we're excited to roll out shortly. If you aren't familiar with Snapchat, it's a, again, 18 to 25-year-olds are pretty much the predominant audiences who use it. And so if they're in landmark spots like Riverside, for example, or Pebble Creek, or Pebble Beach is what it's called, then you can easily swipe and you'll have a lower graphic at the bottom. And so you're helping us brand instead of us do it, you know, alone on ourselves. Again, we have some photography efforts. Portraits recently were redone for executive leadership who are commonly quoted in stories. And then we've also got some marketing photos that we've been able to use. Previously, there was not a marketing graphic photo gallery available to us. And recently, these are some that we took and they look wonderful. And one of the last ones, second to last ones I wanted to show you all is a podcast revamp. So we, you know, we've had some pretty good viewership, or I guess you could say listeners on our podcast, but it's audio only, there was no visual aspect. And what, like I said, we've noticed is more and more people want to see a video format. And so you'll notice 50% of all homes are podcast fans. And so we wanted to provide a more conversational feel, something a little bit more, less formal. And this is what we came up with. And so this is a draft demo, it's not final, and so you all are the first to see it. Welcome to Town Talk.
A brand new show brought to you by the City of Victoria. We're your hosts.
Ashley.
And Shane. You'll hear stories of the city and of Victorians just like you who make it an awesome place to live.
That's right. So listen in to stay informed and entertained. Join us every other week for Town Talk. And so that's just a promotional video that we plan to use once we roll out the podcast. Real quick, next, I want to go into the website redesign, and so I'll just pull that up really quickly. The official launch is May 26th and we're excited to roll this out. So here's the new website homepage. When you type in victoriatx.org, you'll be rerouted to this page. We updated the header right here so that it's easier to find things. For example, permits. If you're a resident, you'll find it under resident. Building permits is right here. If you're a business, you'll also find it under, right here. You can also type if you're overwhelmed by the menu. Or you can see commonly asked questions are listed right here, and this is more residents' corner. And once again, permits is right there. We added a news section. He looks familiar. So of course, any breaking news is going to be featured in this section.
Can you tell that Jason and I have the same background in our pictures?
Same barber, too.
That's right.
Under events, previously we didn't have a centralized calendar and now we'll have that here. Public meetings also will be separated. So this meeting right here would be under that section. We added a social feed, spotlight. Once again, our city manager is here, and a couple more pictures. Did anyone have any questions before I move on from the website? I know it's an exciting feature.
I want to just quickly, we kind of breezed over it.
Yeah.
But one, one of the overarching objectives with this too is the transition of a .org to a .gov. That's a very intentional effort on our part to change our website, which implies changing all of our email addresses and everything else. For me, it was important that we are in par with a lot of other cities in the state in terms of our website. You know, a simple research would show you that the majority of cities are .gov. And, you know, typically people associate .orgs with nonprofits. And there are some cities that are .orgs, but quite frankly, very small cities. And so I felt that a city of our size needed to become a .gov. And so that was a process that, that we're undertaking. And relaunching a new updated website was the perfect opportunity to do that. But that's a very intentional effort on our part that hopefully, you know, as small as it may seem, you know, hopefully improves the legitimacy of, of our branding, our. you know, hopefully improves the legitimacy of our branding, our image, and our website.
Absolutely. And what makes it easier for people to find information is easier navigation. And so not only for branding, but also for the ease of access. Previously, our website was a little bit overwhelming. There was a lot of information. It was kind of hard to find what was where. And so this one is, we made an intentional effort to make it easier for users to find stuff.
And that's why I have a question, because I'm used to finding departments and then finding the city secretary and finding city council to find our documents. And I don't know what my choice, what my first one is. Would it be government or services or?
Yes. So if you were looking for city secretary, it would be under government, because we all work for the city. And so you'll just scroll over to departments and then scroll down to city secretary.
And then is that where they'll also find the agendas and the meetings?
There's actually an agenda button on the homepage.
Yeah, let me go back. You click on the star, by the way, to go back to the homepage. And agendas and minutes.
Agendas and minutes.
Yes, ma'am, is right here.
Will the page be different for different devices, like your iPhone?
It actually will automatically size depending on your iPhone. And so it will be a little bit of a different version. Maybe, for example, the homepage, things will be a little bit more stacked on top of each other, but the information is still there. Let me show you one more department page, and that's city manager. And so most often, when you go to a department page, you'll see the department head, the main person to contact. You'll scroll down. You'll see a little bit more contact information and then some sub-pages right here on the left-hand side. So if I wanted to know a little bit more about his department, who reports to him, I would click on this. And of course, this is just a draft. It's not live yet. It'll go live May 26. In the meantime, each of our department heads are working with our digital media specialist in communications to make sure that they have exactly what content they need. And so you'll see here, we have a couple other bios. So this is huge. You know, the website is the central hub of information that you want to direct everyone to. And so this website redesign, it's been a task in the making. We've worked very closely with IT since September, since I got here, and we're now officially going to be rolling it out. And so I know all of our department heads are pretty excited about it, too. Before I go on, I'm wrapping things up. Did anyone have any other questions about that? Okay. Obviously, like I said earlier, we want to make sure that we're being successful in everything that we do. And data drives that decision-making, drives innovation. Like I said earlier, mobile web traffic has accounted for about half of all global web traffic since the beginning of 2017. That's a pretty big indicator of what we want to do and where to go from here. And so that's hence the reason why we established some internal SMART goals. What's measurable, what's accessible, what's realistic, what's timely. And then, of course, one of those is the monthly city analytics report, which, again, includes website and social media. And so, real quick, some success points. Social media, Facebook in particular, it's not the only method, but we were able to reach 20,000 followers. Or, I'm sorry, the goal was to reach 20,000 followers by June of this year. And if you come over here to the right, you'll see that we actually met that by April, largely attributed to COVID-19, but we still met our goal, and we're happy to take that. The website, we had a goal of increasing our visitors, which means people who go to our website, by 30% by June of this year. And September 2019 to today, we actually doubled that. And again, largely because of COVID. The newsletter, our goal was to establish it, first of all. And so it was established in February, and increase the open rate by about 40%. And right now, we're about at that rate. And so we could do a little better. We're just excited to have it in place. And that's within less than four months. I'll add that. Okay, real quick, wanted to give you guys an update on a community engagement campaign that we've had since, I'd say we started it in November of 2019, and that's the 2020 Census. And so with that came a lot of branding and marketing efforts. We coordinated many meetings with community members on our Complete Count Committee. We coordinated chair meetings. We established a branding plan and set up a new webpage. We purchased a domain name, victoriacounts.com, so it was easy for people in the community to learn about the 2020 Census. We also developed a logo, as you can see in the upper right, and produced some advertisement realms and participated in some events. This lower-right graphic is a billboard that we currently have out. One event promotion that we did was the livestock show. And so here's a couple pictures from there. We raffled off prizes. We talked to a lot of people. It wasn't just an event promotion. It was also the option or the ability to get people to apply for a census job. And so we had various types of people stopping by our booth, asking questions. And so it was a very successful effort. And then over here, you'll see two PSA videos that I'm sure you've already seen. And so we'll just kind of run through the Facebook promotion that we did there. $62 was put behind the one involving children, and we were able to reach 7,000 people in Victoria. And that was only within a week span. And the same was for the community leaders. We put $50, and we're able to reach 9,000, again, within a week span. And so you can see we're...
What's the difference between reach and click?
So reach means if you're on your social media feed and you're scrolling, people stop and look at it. Now clicks is the actual call to action that we really are aiming for. And so when people click, they're clicking on it and watching the video.
But you know that they stopped?
Yes.
Huh.
Yes, it does measure that. We also measure engagement, which means if people post about it or respond to our post, if they share it, if they comment, or simply like it. And so that's not featured in this little summary, but that is something that we can track as well. Good question. Last thing I wanted to talk about was COVID-19. And this, once again, was an undertaking for communications. It's been a busy year. We held 33 press briefings. And with that, we were able to update a lot of our efforts, things that we hadn't even thought about doing, but were forced to consider doing because of, you know, the needs of the audience. We had people asking, well, what about the deaf or impaired, hearing impaired? And so you'll see in the upper-right corner, we not only asked Ms. Karen Orser to come, but we also created a little graphic, a separate webcam, to be able to zoom in on her hand sign language as well. On average, we reached up to 50,000 viewers, and that's solely online. That's a huge audience that I don't think we had been tapping into before. We, as you can see at the lower thirds, which is the lower part of the screen, we increased promotions. And so Shane over here created some graphics. I asked him to put together one for the census, for any other reminder that we had, including Gentex Decision Day. And so that was exciting. We also set up a separate webpage, did some billboards, additional PSAs. We concluded four, actually, all within a span of a month. And so that was a lot. We translated all of our posts on social media to Spanish. And we also offered some closed captioning on our YouTube videos. And so I think you could say we reached a lot of people. And so what that means is we had a lot of feedback, a lot of good feedback this year on the new efforts that we've done. We want to increase use of those technologies. We want to create new and engaging ways of reaching the public. And you'll see some of those listed there. And so we've got a lot. We've got a lot we've done, and we want to continue to do, and we're excited about the future. So I'll leave it at that. Does anyone have any questions?
Great work.
I would just like to thank you, Ashley, for the work that you and your counterpart Caitlin did during that COVID-19 response.
Yes, sir.
I think from the time we declared our first declaration, you put together, y'all put together a press briefing in less than three hours. And that was one of our first ones. And they evolved as we went along. And I think our goal was to be the most reliable, the most accurate and dependable source of information. And I think y'all did that extremely well. I think the public grew to expect that presentation. They were kind of disappointed when it went away. But I think what it did is it solidified our community. Y'all's cooperation with the media was extraordinary. There was a working relationship there, I think. And the goal, everybody's goal, was to get out accurate and reliable information. And I think that was invaluable. And I want to thank you for all of the work that you did on that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Now, we couldn't have done it without, I want to mention my amazing communications department team. They all stepped up. They were extremely proactive. And I look forward to introducing you to all of them if you haven't met them already. And thank you, Mayor, for all the work that you and everyone else did during that time.
Y'all did all the work. We just showed up. But thank you again.
Thank you, Ashley. All right, so next up, we have Daryl, and I think his presentation is twice as long?
But I do have a picture of Jesus in mind, just not to be left out.
Thank you. It's to be expected. In every presentation moving forward, at least one. Thank you.
We do get evaluated once a year, you know.
Oh, we got to get to those, Mike.
But can you make Ken's...
See how fast I make things work?
But can you make Ken smile?
I can make Ken smile. Good evening, everyone. This is something new for me after being in a trash man for 32 years. But last June, the city manager talked to me about taking over Right-Away Mowing. And... There we go. Right-Away Mowing, and we had, at that time, a flood buyout division. These were all previously under Parks. And we wanted to, he wanted to roll that under the community or under the Environmental Services Department. And so we took that on. And we looked at it, and we thought we need to, there needed to be an emphasis on beautification, timely scheduled maintenance. And productivity is a big thing. Coming from the solid waste industry, it's all about productivity. So as we looked at this, we kind of looked at the whole picture. We needed to get where we needed to go. We needed to get there fairly quickly. I want to introduce my community appearance manager, Jackie Yates. So what I'm about to show you, she's 99.9% responsible for. No, her and her crew do a very good job. We are one employee short, and we are looking. So if you know anybody that's wanting to work with mowing and flowers, please let us know. So our daily priorities: maintenance, beautification, litter, and education. As we sat back and looked at this, these all kind of go hand-in-hand into the beautification of our city and our community. So big picture, we stepped back, we looked at it, and we thought, okay, if we look at this as a whole, what do we need to do? Where do we need to get to, and how do we get there?
And even bigger picture than that, recall that the 2035 Plan calls for emphasis on enhancing our community appearance. And so this reorg was intended to be more intentional with that effort to actually do something more proactively about it.
So we wanted to create a mowing, landscaping, and spraying work schedule. When they came over and we talked to them about, well, how often do we do this? Well, we try and hit it every 14 days, or we try and hit it every 10 days. That's really not what we wanted. We get calls from the public, hey, when are you going to mow this area over here? We don't know. We wanted to, we wanted to look at the flood buyout. I had two full-time employees mowing 100-plus flood buyout lots, most of them in Greens Edition in South Victoria, on about a 14-day rotating schedule, two full-time employees. We wanted to look at that. We wanted to create a community appearance division that looked at also landscaping. But we, I've talked to y'all before about a strike team. So we wanted to make sure that we got that in there. When we have problems around the city, we don't want to wait four days, five days. We want to go get it and take care of it. We wanted to identify city-owned properties around the city and then look at what can we do to improve those properties. And then identify equipment needs to finish projects efficiently. What happens is, as we get started, we cut a tree down, and then we've got a stump sticking up this high. We've got to go rent a piece of equipment, go back. So we wanted to try and figure out ways to get around that. So what did we put into action? We created a work schedule. And these slides are all followed up by other slides, so I'm going to go through them fairly quickly, and then we'll talk through the slides as I get to them. The adopt-a-highway. We have a quarterly pickup by city employees and family. The city manager, Jan Scott, Mark Lofgren, have all been out there to help us clean up on Saturdays. Much appreciated. The ditch cleanup in front of the target area. Some of these things we've been doing for a while, but will continue. We created the litter strike team. Loop 463 ditch rehab, which is actually the north outfall. Loop 463 flowerbed rehab, which TechStop put in and then kind of becomes a property of the city and never really got anything done with it. Entryway sign rehab, which we're working on now. And then contracted flood buyout lots. We were able to take what two full-time employees were doing, contract that out for $25,000 a year. Work schedule. We created a calendar. This calendar has, and we have one for every month, and I have calendars that I can make available. But if a citizen's calls and says, hey, when are you going to be on Loop 463? My office staff can look at this calendar and tell them the exact days when we're going to be there, when maybe TechStop's going to be there, when AJ Shredding's going to be there. But we're able to give that information right away without having to wait and call Jackie or call one of her crew and say, when are we going to do this? Does anybody know? Adopt-a-highway. You can see some before, during, and after pictures. We do this quarterly. It's mostly employees and family members that do this. And it's a great thing. We pick up from Navarro to Main Street on Loop 463, both sides of the feeder, both sides of the highway.
I think there's my picture.
Yes, sir, it is. He's right there on the left.
Thank you.
And he had a safety vest on.
Safety first.
Litter strike team. We started the litter strike team. This is not just a litter strike team beautification thing. This is an all-in-all department, environmental department chore. I mean, it really is a chore. What you're seeing there is a trailer house that was actually damaged during Hurricane Harvey. Did not come to our attention until, I want to say, that one was picked up last year, probably around November. So since we've started this, just in 2019, we did 475 cubic yards of pickup. That is not stuff that was called in by customers. That is stuff that was called in by me, my drivers, our beautification folks. It was called into our office. In 2020, just in a couple of months, we've already picked up 352 cubic yards. This is how we track that. So you'll see on there, we have drivers have called in limbs. You'll see my name up there. You'll see Frank. Frank is our solid waste supervisor. So there are multiple ways that we get things on this list. We're driving around. We see him. I think I mentioned to council a while back that we was driving down the road, and I saw a pallet setting up against the side by where the old Payless Shoe Store used to be. Said, somebody pick it up. Goes on the list. We want to keep track of it because there is a cost to doing this. And so we want to make sure that when we bring in our budget, that cost is in there.
And I also think what's important about that, too, is slowly but surely over time, you know, adopting this mindset of ownership from the different members of his team, because they're the ones that are driving around the streets of our city every day. And so hopefully, over time, this becomes more of just the way to do business, where you drive, you see something, call it in, right? Don't just ignore it. And so now we are working, now that exists. And so I think that's important to note.
It is, and it's made a huge difference around town. I see it as I drive. The Loop 463 ditch rehab, which is also the north outfall. We clean both sides of this ditch. We clean both the side where IHOP is and the side where Olive Garden is. Now, it's cleaning part of this ditch out. What I did was I went back and got with Michael Brzezinski with TechStop. And they're working to try and find funds to fill these ditches in with the white rock. So all I have to do is spray them. and they're working to try and find funds to fill these ditches in with the white rock, so all I have to do is spray them. We don't want to get back to this again. The flower bed. Had a lot of compliments. We've had a lot of calls. A lot of people have noticed the flower bed. This is, if you're on Navarro headed towards downtown Victoria or into Victoria, you'll see the flower bed off to your right. They're all planted with native plants. Um, and thanks to the rain, the flower bed's been doing great. Looks really good. But it's also a huge improvement because we're getting, keeping the loop mode more often, and it makes a big difference. Beautification sign. We are working on all three current beautification signs to improve the look of those signs. The top, I saw it on Channel 25 on TV. They have that, that logo. That sign on one of their entryways or one of their entrances into the channel, I mean, into the 5 o'clock news, I think, or 6 o'clock news. You can see the black stripes on it. Looked horrible. The middle is after we cleaned the sign. The bottom, we just finished last Friday. Um, and I'm happy to say all those plants are still there this week, because we did have a little bit of worry about whether or not we'd lose some of those over the weekend. So...
Don't give anybody any ideas.
Yeah, well, it's kind of late for that. So beautification projects in the budget, we've identified, uh, six more beautification projects outside of what we're doing this year with the entryway signs. All entryway signs will be finished this year. And kind of, as you look through those, those are just city properties. But we look at putting native plants around to make some of those properties look better. It may be a flower bed. It may just be some various plants that are put in that we trim around or weed it around as we mow. This is a great thing. So as we started talking, AJ Shredding is one of our contractors that mows the loop multiple times a year. And as we're talking to him, as Jackie is talking to him, he decides he wants to be a part of what we're doing to beautify Victoria. He donated five to 10 fine mowings, string trimming around trees, sides, concrete walks, and curbs, mow and litter pickup, and he is actually out there this week.
Correct.
Uh, picking up litter on Loop 463. That is several thousand dollars worth of free service, just because he wanted to be a part of what we were already doing.
I'm sure we've told him thank you, that we do it publicly.
We told him to watch tonight.
Thank you.
Keep Victoria Beautiful. Uh, we kicked off Keep Victoria Beautiful in January of this year. Uh, we've got a new logo, which you can see there. Uh, we've had two meetings. We have a meeting this Thursday. And, um, we're working on prioritizing some upcoming projects.
And hopefully with that, we can get community members themselves more interested and involved with what's going on. Um, so we want to, we realize that it's not 100% up to us to make the appearance of our community better. But hopefully, we are providing the structures, leading by example, so that hopefully others can step up like AJ, uh, to help us do that.
And we, we've had some other people who are interested in what we're doing. We've got a great group of people who want to be a part of it, keep, uh, Keep Victoria Beautiful that have showed up at our board meetings. Um, even the county is wanting to be a part of it, which is, I know, something that city council asks all the time. COVID-19 response, what did we do? Well, we continued to work, but what we also did was we partnered with the community center with Parks. And while we were off the community center's, uh, staff, instead of staying home, came in and worked with our beautification department. We trimmed, we shaped, we mulched all of the community center property, so that it would be ready to go whenever we're ready to open up. This is, this is the interesting one, um, because I will tell you that those numbers are extremely high from what I would normally get in a year. But when you say free...
And stay at home.
And stay at home. You get a lot of phone calls. Um, so just since April 1st to May 6th, this is, we're continuing this, and I want to make sure the, the public hears this. We're continuing this through the rest of this month, that you can call in and get your brush or your out-of-cycle brush picked up, or your bulky waste item picked up at no additional charge. So just from April 1st to May 6th, 522 bulky item requests. Now, the good side to that is we're cleaning up the city. That's stuff that may end up, God knows where. Out-of-cycle brush pickups, 269. Now, brush pickups, we provide four times a year to most households. You wouldn't expect that number to be as high, but it's the time of the year, too, where people trim their brush and like to clean out stuff, and being that they're at home, we're getting a lot more of that. So before I end, this is kind of my mic drop moment. This is, if you're setting an Olive Garden parking lot, looking across the street in that ditch, that's it a month ago. That's it today. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I think it's one of the key things that needed to happen in Victoria. I think it's been long overdue, and I'm glad to see that, uh, it is happening, and I think, as Mr. Garza said, I think as we set the example, I think our citizens are going to step up as well and start keeping their properties, uh, the way we ought to do it as a community. And thank you very much, Daryl.
Thank you, Daryl. Those are all the city manager reports that we have. I know there's an, uh, executive session agenda item on the, on the, an executive session item on the agenda, but we do not need to meet an executive session.
With that, I guess we are adjourned.